Our regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order at 6:06 PM. Do we have any member of the clergy who would like to do the invocation? Please, please do. And we'll ask Mr. Rob right here to do the pledge of allegiance today, sir.
Okay, let's bow our heads. Father God, thank you so much for this day. Thank you for the freedom that we have in this country. Thank you for the limited government and the processes we have to decide issues for our city, our state, our country. Thank you for the peaceful resolution of these things. We're really grateful to be a part of a country like that. And I do today, Father, ask you to bless this, this meeting and everyone here, everyone who's come to be a part of participating in government, Lord, bless them. Thank you for the city council, the city attorney's office, the city manager, and all the, all the people that make the city what it is. We're grateful to be in a comfortable city and a peaceful city. So we ask your blessing on this day and be with us as, as we look through the issues of the day. Thank you, and I ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you to the community for being here. We hope you're all doing well. To, I guess we're already a couple of months into the new, to the new year. A lot of things are happening. There's still unrest in the world. We hope that things get better in certain segments of the world, certain sections of the world, and you know, our own political national, on the national scale, that there be some type of, of normalcy with that process. I don't know if we can claim that there's been normal, you know, for many reasons. So at least what we know is, as elected officials up here is that we can control what happens in our city, right? Okay, so. Okay, Madam Clerk, the roll call, please.
Councilmember Manning. Councilmember Montero. Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Reyes English.
Here.
Mayor Vargas.
Here. Okay, our two councilmember colleagues have been excused. If they do show up, they've given us notice, okay? Thank you. So let's see. We have a presentation. Jessica Merritt, Director of Communications, LAX Development Projects, will come to the podium and give us a president, a presentation.
Hello, thank you all for having me. Honorable Mayor, members of the council, it's a pleasure to be here to provide an update on LAX development projects. And I know you all have a copy of this presentation. It's a bit longer than what I'll be showing today. I have abbreviated the presentation for time considerations, but if there's anything that you see in there that you'd like to have me expand upon, I'm happy to do so. All right, so to kick it off, in 2022, LAX was ranked the busiest destination in origin airport in the world, and the six, and that's by our destination and origin numbers, and then by passenger numbers, we're the sixth busiest airport in the world. We'll have an update on our rankings coming out soon, hopefully in the spring, on what those numbers will be for 2023, but that's where we stand currently. And right now, I'm sure you're all aware, we're in the midst of a $30 billion capital improvement program, which represents the largest public works program in the history of LA. And this program is working to provide incredible guest journeys from start to finish. And a lot of the projects that are a part of that capital improvement program relate to creating a new arrival and departure sequence at LAX. So I'll be touching on our automated people mover, our APM, a bit more, and that's a project that's going to take guests from our central terminal area to facilities east of the terminal and vice versa. I'll also be touching on our consolidated rental car facility, or CONRAC, and that's a new facility that's bringing over a dozen rental car agencies that are located around LAX's campus currently, under one roof. And then we've already had projects opening as a part of this work, so I'll point to our economy parking lot that opened in 2021. And then we're taking advantage of the opportunity to make roadway improvements along the way with all of these projects, so we can ensure that we're removing congestion from local neighborhoods. And all of this equates to making efficient and dependable travel options for our passengers, whether a passenger is using their personal vehicle, a rideshare platform, the airport's new connection to the Metro K Line that's arriving soon, or if they're renting a car, they can get where they need to go on time and with ease. And I'll just point out, this map is an important one. You'll see our automated people mover route highlighted in orange, and then the three stations that are within the central terminal area are highlighted here, and then the three stations that are to the east of the campus are also highlighted. And now we're just going to take a look at our automated people mover. This project is going to run on 2.25 miles of elevated guideway. As I mentioned, when it opened, when it opens, it will have six stations, three outside of the central terminal area and three within. The train's capacity will have room for 200 passengers per train, and that's with their luggage. And each train is made up of four cars that are linked together. The travel duration is 10 minutes end to end, so if someone started their journey at the CONRAC and then rode all the way into the central terminal to the station that's adjacent to the Tom Bradley International Terminal, it would take them 10 minutes. And during peak hours, which is for most of the day at LAX, a new train will arrive to each station every two minutes. The train is going to operate for free 24/7, 365 days out of the year, and it's going to be for ticketed passengers and those who have business at the airport, so folks who are picking up their friends or loved ones. And here are some progress shots. Right now, all of the guideways have been electrified, and guests will soon see the train testing in Zone 1, which is near to the train's maintenance and storage facility. And then you can also see these station fitouts. They are well underway now. And then another update is, we're expecting the delivery of our final train car by the summer. And I'll move on to talk about our consolidated rental car facility, or CONRAC. This is a LEED Gold accredited facility. It represents $1 billion in construction contract value, and to date, it's created over 5,000 jobs and $200 million in wages for the local workforce. It is a very large facility. When it opens, it's going to be the largest CONRAC facility in the world, and it's approximately 5.3 million square feet. And I can talk through what's on site, around 18,000 parking stalls with 6,600 ready return spaces, 10,000 spaces for idle vehicle storage, and then, of course, parking spaces for our employees and the rental car agent employees. Super important is that, once it opens, the CONRAC is going to eliminate 3,200 daily rental car shuttle trips from the central terminal area, so really easing the congestion within the horseshoe. And the progress on this project is that the core and shell of the building is now complete, and the individual rental car companies are working to build out their individual spaces. But you can see in the image in the bottom left, we have landscaping up there. It's drought resistant and native landscaping. And then on the bottom right, you can see a view of a new roadway that is associated with this project. Again, we're taking advantage of the opportunity to improve roadways around this project and all of the lamp or landside access modernization program projects. But when the CONRAC opens, it's going to have improved roadways on all sides of the facility, and super importantly, a connection to the 405 freeway that is expanded and very easy to access. And within the central terminal area, we also have our seven vertical, terminal vertical core projects, and this is creating a new connection point between our forthcoming APM and then the stations within the central terminal area. And I'm excited about this because I think, as you can see in the photo, these terminal vertical cores have glass curtain walls, so it's really going to bring in light and air into the terminal spaces. And then within these buildings, there are elevators, escalators, and stairs to ensure ease of travel between the various levels, and eventually, ease of travel to access the automated people mover. And another project that's making progress, we just celebrated the topping out or placement of the final steel beam on this project in January of this year. It's our Midfield Satellite Concourse, or MSC South, project. And this is a project that is being built in nine segments to create a southern extension of the existing west gates at Tom Bradley International Terminal. It's going to add approximately 150 square feet and gates for eight narrowbody planes. It's being built to LEED Silver specifications. And then incredibly important to mention, it's utilizing this off-site construction relocation method. This is a very innovative method, method that, you know, is being watched closely by our partners within the aviation industry, but even outside of that, because it's enabling us to deliver the project in an incredibly accelerated timeline and on budget. So this project just broke ground in June of '23, and we're planning on opening it in fall of '25. And important to the airport as well is that, because this is being built at an off-site site that's not behind the secure line, we're not impacting airport operations on the airfield, but we're also enabling new job opportunities for folks who might not be able to get security clearance on the airfield itself. We're also undergoing our wayfinding enhancements program, and this is creating a new cohesive look and feel throughout the entire airport campus. So the experience that folks are going to have at the CONRAC will also be mirrored within our terminals. And this is just creating an intuitive guest navigation experience from curb to gate. When we say wayfinding, I just want to make sure folks understand that it's not just about the physical signage, it's also about the digital experience, and also the human-to-human interactions that folks have within the airport with our guest service team. We're also working to beautify the entire campus with our landscape improvement program. So you can see in the rendering here, we're creating kind of like a park-like atmosphere around the historically landmark theme building. And then something else that has brought all of our guests and employees a lot of joy is this recent interterminal connection. So we just wrapped up our modernization of Terminal 2 and 3, and with that, we're able to deliver a connection between Terminal 3 and the Tom Bradley International Terminal. So now, if folks want to, they can walk that entire path post-security from Terminal 1 all the way to Terminal 8. I'm not sure if folks are going to avail themselves to that two-mile journey, but what it does mean is that they can access lounges, concessions, children's play area, pet relief areas that may be in a nearby terminal. And also make mention of the fact that, while we work to improve and modernize the airport, we're also ensuring that we're creating economic opportunities for the local community through programs like Hire LAX. And all of this is preparing us for the upcoming national and international games, but beyond that, it's making lasting infrastructure that's going to serve Angelenos for generations to come. And with that, I'll leave this QR code up on the screen if folks want to get signed up for our press releases, our construction advisories, or general updates on the airport, they can use this link to do so. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Thank you.
My pleasure.
To the chair.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Jessica, thank you for coming out. Also want to thank Nicole Carcel, Director of Community Relations, for collaborating together to assure that you're here this evening to provide our residents of Hawthorne what our new LAX looks like. Very excited for the people mover, very excited for how it's growing, and more importantly, the jobs that it's provided. I've been through LAX, and it's looking great. I really want to take advantage of renting a car in, in one spot and being able to get to your destination just by jumping on the people mover. So thank you so much for that, and I just want to acknowledge that both Katrina and myself are board members with the LAX AAC, which is the LAX Area Advisory Committee, and we meet monthly and provide advisory information to its LAX board. But I'll, Katrina, do you have anything?
Yeah, to the chair. I just wanted to say thank you too for coming tonight, and I'm really excited about the jobs because we're having a job fair this Thursday, and you guys will be there, so I'm excited about that. So thank you so much.
Oh, my pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, ma'am. And I know, I go to Shakey's on Arbor Vita, and I looked across the street and all the, you know, all those dilapidated homes were there for like the longest time. So what's going to happen, I mean, this is like starting 15, 20 years ago, and so started seeing the construction. I was always wondering what it was going to be. I knew there was some element of rental car there and parking, but in what capacity? I mean, you, you made it very clear, so thank you for being here and explaining it to our community. Thank you.
My pleasure, and I look forward to also getting you all in to see that project, so I would be happy to facilitate a tour. It'd be an honor too.
If you do have any updates, we would like maybe through the council, Mayor Protem and the councilwoman, if you could come back and give us any updates that would be significant to present to our community.
Certainly, yes. I think a good date for that is likely in the summer. I would have some more news.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you again.
Yeah, and let's coordinate some tours if, at the right point.
Yeah. Wonderful.
That would be for the community to participate in a tour.
Correct, yes. And also for you all as well.
Yes.
So I think we can do a tiered approach.
Okay, great.
To get everyone in.
Great, thank you.
We're going to have to start incorporating tiered approaches with our stuff here. I like that word, man, but yeah, whatever's best. Okay, the guidelines for oral communications.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, all remarks should be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communication, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Gordon Michael Migo.
Hello, everyone. Gordon Michael Migo, native and resident of Hawthorne since October 8, 1952. RE Civic Center Revitalization. Since the last meeting of the Hawthorne City Council regarding the Civic Center, I have received further comments on the revitalization proposals from people throughout our community in Hawthorne. The new city hall, they feel needs to be built along Hawthorne Boulevard, and it must include a parking structure underneath the new city hall to make it easy access to and from, you know, city hall for the, you know, mayor, council, and, you know, employees. And just like the headquarters of the Hawthorne Police Department, the new city hall would be in a prominent location that elevates the stature of our downtown area and would drive a lot of development to our downtown area, the mall especially. It is shown in my drawing, which reflects the changes in design under revision A. I've provided each and every one of you a copy of the drawing. Based upon practical design considerations, as well as health and safety reasons, the new Civic Center Park must not extend to Hawthorne Boulevard. The new park would be located in between the west side of the new city hall, that's along the boulevard, and the east side of this current city hall. It'd be stretching basically from the railroad tracks down towards 126th Street, nestled in between, in other words. And it is also shown in the drawing, which I've provided you. With a new city hall, a new downtown park, a new Hawthorne Renaissance Plaza Mall for shopping, dining, entertainment, you name it, welcoming center for SpaceX, Tesla Motor Dealers, and so forth, and community events as well, a new RFK or major medical center hospital in our city, a new public works facilities, which was presented to us in the last council's presentation, a new senior center also presented, and I might add, both very well done and thoroughly love it, and want to see it go forward. And that also includes the new city park facilities. The city of good neighbors will become a great shining city on the hill in the LA County region during the 21st century, and I, I think Hawthorne has been waiting for a long time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. And super quick comment, I'm not supposed to comment on this. I always appreciate you coming up with your diagrams, with your presentations and requests. We're very far along with this process of planning what's going to happen there, and we already have a senior, senior citizens center already in place. And we already have a senior, senior citizens center already in place. I really don't see the dimensions here. I don't, this is not...yeah, I know. But if you're going to provide us something, it'd be great if you could give us dimensions because...okay, no, it's not an interchange, sir. I just wanted just to let you know that I appreciate you contributing in this manner and that it'd be helpful if you put some actual measurements to see if things fit or not. Thank you. All right, we need something more than this. It has to be...but can you enter this into the record, Mr. City Manager? Mohammed Hussein, please.
Salaam alaikum. Peace be upon all of you. My name is Mohammed Alad Hussein. I'm a proud resident of Hawthorne for 33 years, and I am a small rental property owner also. I have, I'd like to request to increase the police patrol in our street because recently I have couple of incident happen in my street. I'm living 116th Street and Puro. There is a lot of vandalism going on, theft going on. Recently, last couple of month is increased. Two days ago, my neighbor came to me and he was asking me, did you, your property, do you have a camera? Can you just check for me? But unfortunately, my camera does not catch, his car was there. So I barely see any police patrol car in my area. And I have a different property in Dottie and 139. So all of this area, I see the crime is increasing. So I am requesting to take some step or to increase the police patrol, especially at the nighttime. So this is my first request. And second, I want a one request to council, please try to make a resolution for what's going on in current world affair right now, especially in the Gaza. There is every day hundreds of pupils are getting killed. So, and remember, we have to all remember, we are, we are in the one world. We are in the, right now is, is any, anywhere, any injustice going on, any killing going on, is going to affect everyone. So we request to you guys make a resolution to ceasefire, permanent ceasefire, and make a peace on this area. And especially the stop the funding, our government, our money to funding to kill innocent people. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Christina Prado, Fair Housing Foundation.
All right. Hello, City Council. My name is Christina Prado. I'm one of the outreach coordinators with the Fair Housing Foundation. So we're contracted with the city to provide fair housing services. That's anything to help the community better understand rights and responsibilities for landlords and tenants. We've been working very closely with the Housing Department and we love your city. So I just wanted to come out and share a little bit more about what we have coming up for the month of April as well, because we are commemorating the federal passing of protections for fair housing. So we're having a virtual celebration. We would love to invite the City Council and community members to our virtual event happening April 25. And we also have a youth poster contest open to all youth who want to participate in making a poster with this year's theme, "Fair Housing: A Place to Call Home," with a first-place, first-place prize of $125 in gift card. So it's open to youth in 4th through 8th grade, and they just have to take a picture of their poster, send it over to me, and we'll be voting on it for, during our virtual celebration, which you all are invited to. So if any community members are interested in participating as well, I have some flyers. I'll probably leave it in the lobby. But we just wanted to invite everyone and let the community know that we are the fair housing service provider in case anybody wanted to connect and learn a little bit more about what we do as an organization. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do you have your card on you? Okay, can you hand that over to our city manager? And I'm going to be providing your information to some constituents that have contacted me with regards to their current housing situation. And you've always been a good advocate of our tenants and more importantly, providing the rights of the do's and don'ts, right? And partnering with us. So I'll make sure to pass that information on to these individuals because I really would like to see them get some help. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you again, ma'am. Chova Salazar.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. So I've been here before. So I have a citation, 12803. The current amount apparently is $2,000. It started with $500 apparently for not maintaining the yard. And I, last time I said that it has been maintained with, with minor issues, very small issues. So I went to the front desk trying to get an actual invoice, and they say they don't have any records. So I'm not sure if this is, this, I guess mail is actually coming from the, from the city of Hawthorne, or this is harassment, I don't know. So I would like to know, I would like to receive a copy of the actual invoice so that I can actually clear it because this is running me crazy. And so I would like the guidance for, or guidelines for requesting the extra fees to be waived because it started with $500 and now it is $2,000, if that's at all possible. So again, according to Hilda, there's no record. So I don't know what to make of this. I also would like the opportunity to show the city Michael Purcell's city employee basis for this citation because he actually have pictures. So you would see that is his pictures that show that it's only minor, minor issues what they are. And I would like to also show the city other issues that are along the streets of the city of Hawthorne. So with this, I also want to propose the city to maybe work on an app that would have location services that would allow the community to much easier report issues of unwanted items. So I think it would be fairly easy to just pin something that would send it to Republic Services and maybe you, city of Hawthorne, could also keep an eye on it. I think these issues could be easily resolved, but I think just calling Republic Services puts you on hold for like 20 minutes. So that's discouraging. So being able to report it with like one click or like within two seconds, I think would be, we should be able to resolve these issues. And I'm willing to test the app if we actually come to it or any other process. I'm actually willing to volunteer on it. So yeah, I, please allow me the opportunity to show the pictures that they have on record for this citation, if it is a citation. If not, I would like to know because I need to make a police report. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Okay, ma'am. City Manager has a form and...oh, okay, Sergeant Arms has, he has a form. You could talk to him and then with the city manager's instructions, they can direct you to the right person and get the information.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for coming. Sir? All right, thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the City Council, please form a line.
Greetings of peace to the council and city members of Hawthorne. My name is Abdullah Greg Ali, city, community outreach person here at Islamic Center Hawthorne. And today we'd just like to invite you all. I know you got some emails. Just want to come personally and invite you to our Interfaith Ramadan Community Dinner on March 23rd, 6:30. And also we'd like to thank you for your ongoing support throughout the years. It's very much appreciated. We work hand-in-hand with the City Council and the Police Department, and it's been very helpful. Again, I came like in five months ago, beginning of the conflict, and I just want to say that at that time was just starting. And as you can see, when I asked for the ceasefire, you see how it's gotten worse now. So continued support and prayers to, to the world for peace and togetherness and justice. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we hope that, I think the proper channel, the more direct impact you, the group, the more direct impact people could make or any groups that want to influence anything is to talk to their congressional representative because they're the ones that make a vote and impact the funding that the United States gives to the Israeli government for their, for what they're doing. So I think really the, the onus is on our congressional representatives, but we're taken aback by what's happening too. I am personally, I'm not really happy with that. So I just hope things get resolved and our federal government has something to do with it and stopping it.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff, neighbors, and especially Ramadan Mubarak to our Muslim neighbors at the start of Ramadan. I would like to address three things tonight very quickly, so I'm going to have to go fast. The VVA scholarship program is still in effect. The deadline for it is coming up on Sunday, April 7. There are flyers in the lobby in addition to the ones that are available on the website. And if any of the seniors in high school in the area need to have a Vietnam veteran to interview in order to apply for the scholarship, contact us through the flyer and we can hook you up with a veteran who you can interview to get that done. Second thing, this Sunday at the Hawthorne VFW, there will be the, the monthly breakfast that they do. And they have been kind enough to allow those of us on the Veterans Commission to set up a table there so that if people from the community want to find out about the banner program, or if they want to bring in the information and sign up for a banner for a family member or one of our deceased KIA people, they would be able to do it. The other thing that's important about this is that there are members of the community who want to contribute to this, but say only want to put in $5 or $20 or something like that, rather than sponsoring an entire $300 banner, we would be able to accept those donations and they can also be accepted, I believe, through the HR office. So if somebody wants to make a smaller donation toward putting the banners up on Hawthorne Boulevard, contact one of us and we'll help you to do that. And then the last thing I wanted to bring up is item number six on tonight's agenda, ordinance number 2249, about changing the rulings pertaining to cannabis. One of the things that I've been concerned about all the way along, my worst nightmare came into fruition last Monday. In Detroit, or suburb of Detroit, there was a huge explosion at a warehouse that was storing the kinds of vape canisters and other things that are used for cannabis program, or products. And there was a lot of butane in that warehouse, also CBD, oil stuff, vape stuff. And there were a number of canisters that were found, butane canisters that are used to refill a number of the containers. That warehouse caught on fire and the canisters were exploding all over the place. There was a young man who was at a gas station away from the warehouse, and the canisters that exploded had been found as much as two miles away from the exploding warehouse. The young man who was standing in that gas station parking lot got hit in the head by one of the canisters and he died. And I think we're making a very, very big mistake by accelerating the use of cannabis products and vape products and things like that in our city, especially having facilities where people can go in and use them on-site, where they're stored in the back of the facilities, where if there's a fire, we've got a serious explosion and fire damage in our community. Please don't do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? If, I don't see anybody else, so if not, I declare oral communication closed, ordered.
Real quick. Just real fast.
Well, yeah, we're finished with the oral communication.
Are you?
So go ahead.
Really? Real fast. Catherine, where are you? There you go. Stand up Catherine for me. This is Catherine Sabino Thadeo, 11th grader Hawthorne Math and Science Academy. This is her first time attending a City Council meeting. She reached out to me, asked if I could help her along and mentor her, and I said you need to come to council. So thank you Catherine for being here and thank your parents for dropping you off. I'll make sure you get home.
I'll ask my City Council member colleagues to reopen oral communications for the sake of accommodating this young lady.
Catherine, you want to say a few words about what you're hoping? Come on up to the podium, please. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Catherine Alexandra Sabino Thadeo, and I am a student, junior, in the Hawthorne Math and Science Academy right here by the police station. And recently I was informed of a program called the CLYPL, which is a summer program for Chicano or Latino students, and it's a leadership program to help us study politics. And so I reached out to Angie in hopes that she could maybe like write me like a recommendation letter or to like mentor me and teach me what I could expect in that kind of program. And so, yeah.
Thank you Catherine. Thank you for being here.
Thanks for being here, ma'am. Miss.
11th grade.
Okay, I don't see anybody else. Is there anybody else? Okay, I'll declare oral communication closed, ordered. Thank you, guys. Thanks for everybody who came and spoke. Madam Clerk, your consent calendar, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have four items on the consent calendar. They're items 2 through 5 for your consideration and approval. Item 2, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item 3, City Treasurer requests approval of the warrants for March 12, 2024. Item 4, Resolution Number 8453, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, setting forth certain policies for the management of the city budget. Item 5, Resolution 8454, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, proclaiming March 24th as Women's History Month for adoption.
Yes, sir. I'd like to pull item 4 for discussion.
I'll move on everything else.
Okay, everyone, please vote.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Yes, please vote.
The voting reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
Thank you. I have some questions for staff. I don't know if maybe our Finance Director could help in addition to City Manager, whichever is most appropriate. So I was reading through the resolution, I was very impressed by it and very excited about it. I saw a lot of proposed policies for how we should manage our finances as a city that I think would be very, very valuable to the city of Hawthorne. I just kind of want to highlight a few things and ask a few questions. My first question was, I saw in the first whereas it mentioned the GFoa, and I was curious, how, what role did GF, did the government, the Government Financial Officers Association play in either drafting this or inspiring this particular resolution?
We actually attended a conference in January where a lot of the GFoa policies were discussed and recommendations as to how cities should address policies and make sure that they are updated on a regular basis. And that's where that, this policy actually came into play.
That's fantastic. I've attended one of their, their conferences in the past and I always thought that they provided some great, great value to, to local municipalities. Item, Section 2, Item A says, "The city will avoid budgetary procedures that finance current expenditures at the expense of meeting future year's obligations, such as postponing expenditures, accruing future, accruing future revenues, or rolling over short-term debt." Could, whether yourself or the City Manager kind of speak to the, the purpose of like this particular section?
So the, the purpose of that is to make sure that current year expenditures are paid with current year revenues. We don't want to use prior year revenues or the fund balance. We don't want to use prior year revenues or the fund balance in order to fund a current year's budget.
Got it, got it. This is really kind of, you know, protecting whatever we put in place when we set the budget.
Correct.
That those things are taken care of.
Correct.
And that we don't kind of borrow from another year in order to come up with any new expenditures.
Correct.
I love it. And then revenue policy, says the city will endeavor to maintain a diversified and stable revenue base to minimize the effects of economic fluctuations or revenue accumulation. You know, one thing that we talked about in the Financial Oversight Committee that we had a meeting the other day, is the fact that our tax base is pretty balanced. But, Mr. City Manager, you know, I know you've brought these subjects up in the past, just want to just further highlight my desire to continue the conversations to how we can continue to diversify revenue base and grow our revenue base, you know, whatever, you know, strategies are of ways of kind of continuing this conversation, I think is best. But, you know, definitely think we could benefit from more TLT taxes, really, you know, more hotels down Imperial Avenue and just other ways of bringing in tax revenue. And so I think that's awesome, that that is a priority. And under fund balance policies, talk about unassigned fund balances.
Yes.
That the general fund balance would be maintained at 25% of the general fund annual operating budget, which is about 3% of the average operating expenditures. And so we currently, I think that's about $25,000, would that be the case for us?
For this fiscal year, we're at about $24 million.
Or $20 million.
Twenty-four million, slightly over, I think it was 24,55,000, would be the balance that we are required to have.
And so it's 25 million rounded up, and how much do we have in unassigned funds?
All of our funds are unassigned at this point.
And so it's about 80 million?
Eighty-three million.
So definitely we want to initiate a conversation so we can kind of create a policy that dictates, you know, what do we do with that surplus money? You know, there's, interest rates are high right now, if you, you know, as you're reporting in these today, our money we've made on our money has, is very high, it's 1.4 million or something like that.
1.1.
1.1, 1.1 million so far, and there's a lot of great opportunities, a place to put our money, other than just money market, other than just lay, that may provide with some greater return. And so I think we should come up with some type of policy for, you know, anything above this three, three months, above, you know, assigned expenditures, you know, monies that we, we plan on spending, right, you know, whatever that excess number is, that we have a policy of pursuing, you know, greater returns, because we don't necessarily need it within the next couple of months. And that, you know, I think it's something that the treasurer could be involved in as well. And so I very, very, want to just congratulate you on bringing this to the city. I think that these, these conferences that we have an opportunity to pursue add a lot to our city, allows us to kind of stay up to date with best practices and maintain the great kind of financial rating that we've, we've worked hard to build over the years. And so I just want to thank you for bringing this to the city and I'm very excited to vote for it.
Thank you, and I would like to thank our city manager and council, because over the last five years, you've allowed us to attend these conferences and go to trainings, and that has definitely helped.
Thank you.
That's good to know.
I make a motion?
Second.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we will proceed with the ordinances. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance number 2249, first reading, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, amending section 17.87.050, uses prohibited, of chapter 17.87, mixed-use overlay zone MU, to remove cannabis-related uses from list of uses prohibited, and approving an exemption under section 15061B3 of SEQA for introduction.
I'll introduce.
Item seven, ordinance number 2251, second reading, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, amending section 2.30.140, salaries of the city clerk and city treasurer of chapter 2.30, civil service general provisions and regulations of title two, administration, civil service and personnel of the Hawthorne Municipal Code, and finding an exemption in compliance with SEQA in connection therewith for adoption.
Is there discussion?
Yeah, discussion. Thank you. City Attorney, real quick. Is it, is it something of ordinary or extraordinary that an ordinance is being asked to be sent, changed to a resolution for most cities?
Yeah, so this is following the initial directive from Councilman Patterson to change the salaries for the city clerk and city treasurer. I believe the range was, right now my computer's down, so I can't refer to the, to the agenda bill, but to increase, I believe it was from $1,200 to $1,600 or so. I checked into that, and first of all, the government code allows cities to set the salaries for city clerk and city treasurer by either, either a ordinance, by ordinance or by a resolution. And upon my research, most of the cities in California do it by resolution, because every city has different type of structure for city clerk and city treasurer. Some cities are, city treasurer and city clerks are full-time staff. So I checked the ordinance that we have, and currently, section 2.30140, which was ordained about 20 years ago, set the salaries for the city clerk and city treasurer at, I believe, 800 and...
$833 a month.
Yes, and that was 20 years ago, and in order to change their salary, we would have to amend that code section. Or we could, with this, this ordinance, what it would do in effect would be to amend the ordinance so the city council can set the salaries for the city clerk and city treasurer by a resolution rather than a code amendment. So that's what's being proposed. It's a, we're not, this ordinance would not set a new salary amount for a city clerk or city treasurer, it would just amend the ordinance to state that, that the city council will set the salaries for the city clerk and city treasurer by a resolution.
Oh, why, oh.
Okay, so, as, I'm thinking, I'm talking for myself, because I was a former city clerk, so are we talking, this is, they're not civil service positions, these are ceremonial positions, correct?
The City of Hawthorne is an elected position for city clerk and city treasurer. They do have certain specific duties as a city clerk, and there are times, as you know, that city clerks have to put in more time than at other times. I think currently, Ms. William Hunter can testify to the fact that we're short of staff in that office and we have elections coming up, so I think I've been seeing her car here from early morning to late afternoon, so it, it's, I wouldn't say their duties are completely ceremonial. There are some duties that they still have to fulfill, and sometimes, basically due to the shortage of staff.
Yeah.
They do have to put in extra hours sometimes.
Is there, what's the reason we can't, we can just go ahead and make an adjustment through the ordinance, correct?
You could. The government code specifically states that cities can set the salaries for city clerk and city treasurer by ordinance or by resolution. As you know, the city council salary is determined by an ordinance. It's not a published ordinance in the code, but it could be done by an ordinance or by resolution, and that's up to the city council.
I don't know what the move was for the resolution aspect of it, but I think maybe if we are willing to consider anything, I think we should move to the established route, which is an ordinance.
That's, that's at your discretion.
And there could be an adjustment made, but through an ordinance.
It could be, correct.
Okay, so.
Through the chair?
Yeah.
Uh, city manager, or city manager, Mr. City Attorney, I believe, I guess it's essentially been your suggestion to change the ordinance to allow it to do it by resolution. Doesn't matter to me which way it happens, I'm just curious why that you wanted to do it this way.
As stated in the agenda bill, it gives more discretion and flexibility to city council to do it by resolution. As you know, city ordinance, amending an ordinance requires two readings, and then it goes into effect 30 days thereafter. So a resolution, you know, requires the majority vote of the council and it goes into effect immediately. So it gives more flexibility, and that's the reason why I brought it as a ordinance, I mean, as an amendment to the ordinance, as a resolution, as an option. And as I stated, you know, my research showed that probably more cities have it by resolution than by ordinance.
Yeah, but we've already have the established duties set here in the city, which is that it's a part-time position like ours. So I don't think that we're, we're considering any changes to that type of thing, so I think it might be best just to go through it as an ordinance, but I might need a little bit more time to talk to you about that, but whatever, the council decides up here.
Again, the government code does allow both ordinance and by resolution, so it's up to the council's discretion.
What kind of flexibility were you looking for? Flexibility versus, I'm just saying, why would we prefer flexibility? What's the, what's the, what's the ordinance not allowing for us to do that does not make it flexible?
So because...
Even though we could achieve the same thing.
Yeah, it's because, it's because due to the fact that the ordinance is more formal procedure, where we go through two readings, two different council meetings, and then an adoption, which is affected the 30 days thereafter. And I think that's the reason why, again, this ordinance setting that amount for 830-some dollars has been in existence in the books for 20 years.
Yeah, the cost of living adjustment that we had for, that the city council had obtained like about a year, year and a half ago?
Yes.
Was that under ordinance or was that under resolution?
That was under the ordinance. The government code requires, they're more strict with respect to the salaries for city council members. It requires an ordinance, it can't be done by resolution, and it has, and it goes into effect after the new council members are placed after the general election. So any, any change in the salary, including by adjustment for GPI or the rate of cost of living, it will not go into effect until you have November election and the new members of the council are placed on the dais.
Yeah.
Did you want to say, did you have to know? Do you want to table it?
Let's just, look.
Let's, for more dis...
I think we should table this. I personally think we should table this, but I'd just like to let the ladies know that I think we're looking at this just to do it properly and, and just enact something that's, enact something for you ladies. That's really where we're at, so if we could table it, that'd be great. I guess, do we have?
Are you suggesting we bring it back as a ordinance?
Well, yeah.
The...
Well, could I respond to that real quick? The reason being is if we're, is at the elected officials on the council, and these are fellow elected officials, I think they should just follow the same, it should, the same procedure that we follow to make any general laws, general law, city council adjustments, the same way, that's all.
I have no problem with it being an ordinance. I mean, if you guys don't mind, I'd like to instruct the city attorney to bring the proposed changes that I had made back as a ordinance.
And if I recalled your directive initially as that you would want any adjusted salaries to take effect at the same time as the city council, which would mean after the election?
Yes, January 2025.
That's fine.
Yeah, okay, thank you, guys. That's good. All right, folks, where are we at?
General Matters.
General Matters, please.
Item eight, collaboration with the Los Angeles Dodgers Foundation, recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council receive and file staff report.
I make a motion?
Second.
Please vote for this, or please vote. Please vote for it, like, I'm not trying to like, sound like I was advocating for it. Please vote. Oh, so, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, it wasn't like that.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Next, we have the city manager's consent calendar.
Item nine, progress payment number six in the amount of $29,576.59 due to Elegnor Belco Electric of Chino, California for Hawthorne Boulevard Mobility Improvement Project, Phase Two, project number 23-01. Item 10, progress payment number four in the amount of $199,226.2 cents due to Gerbcon Inc. of Baldwin Park, California for Sewer Main and Miscellaneous Storm Drain Improvement Project 2023, project number 23-04. Item 11, progress payment number nine in the amount of $169,654.80 due to Elegnor Belco of Electric of Chino, California for Highway Safety Improvement Project, Traffic Signal Upgrade and Reconstruction, 120th Street Improvement Project, Prairie Avenue to Felton Avenue, project number 21-06. Item 12, progress payment number one in the amount of $208,836.14 due to Sequel Contractors of Santa Fe Springs, California for Northeast Hawthorne Mobility Improvement Project, project number 21-05. Item 13, City of Hawthorne's Investment Report for the Quarter Ending, December 31, 2023. Item 14, 120th Street Improvements, Crenshaw Boulevard to Felton Avenue, Phase Two, project number 21-03, out to bid. Mr. Mayor, I have a motion to approve items nine through 14 on the city manager's consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Did you want the presentation to happen for item 15?
I think we're ready to vote on it.
Okay. Or do, would anybody like that? I think the motion was not, was through 14.
No, one through 14.
It didn't include 15.
Did not include 15.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, no.
And I didn't want to discuss 15.
Okay.
I make a motion.
Yeah.
Do I have a second for my motion?
I made a motion and the mayor will second.
So you wanted to?
Yeah, I made the motion.
Ah, okay, well.
Thank you.
I know, those are nine through 14, yeah.
Nine through 14, please.
All right, please vote, guys.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Item 14, discussion, that be Felice? Can you come up to address any?
Item 15.
If you have a presentation, can you just read it, please? Because we need it to be read into the record and then...
Item 15, review of the mid-year financial report for fiscal year 2023, 2024. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council receive, approve and file the mid-year financial report for fiscal year 2023, 2024.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Bertem and council, thank you for the opportunity to bring you the mid-year financial review. I'm Felice Lopez, Finance Director.
I didn't recognize you. Or I mean, I couldn't, I couldn't recognize your voice.
Excuse my voice, I am going to try to get through this without losing it, but I will start with page two. We'll start with our cash balances for December 31, 2023. As you can see, in 2018, we were at 14 million, and we now have increased over the last five years to 83 million. It's about a $69 million increase, again, due to all of the diverse revenues that we have in the city, the financial prudence that we've had from the department heads budgeting and not overspending on items that aren't needed, but we, we are very happy to report that we are at 83 million at this point.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah.
The fiscal year 2324 budget was adopted in June 2023. The expenditures were at 96... The expenditures were at ninety-six point two million, and revenues were at ninety-seven, uh, point six million. Uh, with the budget amendment, uh, for mid-year appropriations, uh, that will increase if, uh, council approves to ninety-seven point one million and one hundred point one million for revenue. Okay. The operating revenues, uh, decreased by point five seven percent compared to the previous year, uh, which is about a three hundred thousand dollar decrease, uh, and that is not including ARPA funding. Um, ARPA funding was a one-time revenue, uh, COVID-related item that was approved by council, uh, about a year ago, uh, and it was seven point three million, but we don't, um, include that in our, um, operating revenues, because again, it is a one-time revenue. If we did include it, we would have a twenty-two percent increase in revenue. Uh, the most significant increases for this, uh, first six months of the year was in business license tax of two hundred and fifty-two percent. Um, during this time of the year, it's mainly collections of prior year's, uh, taxes. Investment earnings increased by two hundred and eleven, uh, percent, um, as our council member Patterson mentioned, and that was from three hundred, uh, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand last year to one point one million this year. Uh, hotel TOT decreased by seventeen percent, uh, due to visitors, um, there was a decrease in visitors into the city, and sale ta- sales tax, the combined total of sales tax, uh, decreased by nine percent, and I'll speak a little bit more about that, um, on another slide. So this slide shows you all of our tax revenues that are over a million dollars, and, uh, no, if you can see, because the numbers are pretty small, um, but we had, uh, most of our revenues in this category decreased except for the business license tax. Uh, we went from about three million eighty-eight thousand in property tax to three million seventy-eight, so not very, not a very big drop. Uh, sales tax, the Measure HH portion, uh, dropped from five million one eighty-two to four million nine sixty-two. Uh, sales tax, uh, the Bradley Burns, um, sales tax went from eight point six million to seven point five million. Transient lodging tag- taxes went from about three million seventy-five thousand to two point five million. Um, as we said, business license tax increased from five hundred and eighty, uh, thousand to two million forty-five thousand, uh, this fiscal year, and utility users' tax went from three point six million to three, almost about, um, about three point five million, and refuse tax went from two point, almost two point two million to two million eighty-eight thousand. The next slide will show you, uh, other non-tax revenues, uh, and these are, um, program contributions, which had no change. We're at six hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, other revenue, which is miscellaneous and other contributions, uh, went from one point eight million last year to one point one million, and this was due to a one-time revenue that came in, uh, as a refund. Uh, current service charges increased from one point three million to one point five million. Revenue from use of money, as we said, was three hundred and fifty-nine thousand to one point one million. Fines and forfeitures, um, went from eight hundred and fifty thousand to eight hundred and fifty-two, and licenses and permits, uh, dri- dropped just a little bit from eight hundred and seventeen thousand to seven hundred and forty-eight thousand. And as we said, uh, before, the decrease in sales tax revenues, uh, combined was about nine percent. Bradley Burns was about, uh, a, uh, thirteen percent discount, and Measure HH was a four percent discount. Um, and the reason for those, um, decreases were a decrease, decrease in auto sales, uh, a decrease in the fuel prices compared to, um, a year ago, a decrease in building and construction sales, and decrease in the share of the county pool. Uh, the, the city continues to have a stable and diverse economic base. Um, so as I stated, um, our operating revenues dropped by point five seven percent, which is about three hundred thousand. So the other revenues, although we see the drop in sales tax, we see that other revenues balanced out, um, the revenue so that there was only a three hundred thousand dollar drop. The expenditures for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four saw an increase of about two point three four percent. Uh, if we include the land purchase from twenty-two, twenty-three, then it's actually a drop, uh, of almost seventeen percent from the year before. Um, increases were realized across all of our expenditure categories, and currently, we are at, we were, or at the mid-year, we were at forty-nine percent of the approved budget being spent. The general fund required cash balance is twenty-four million fifty-five thousand for this fiscal year. Uh, and as of December thirty-first, as we stated earlier, we are at eighty-three million. And actually, based on the report I just got from staff, um, our January total, uh, has increased to ninety-five million. So each month, we see that there's an increase, and we just received about a little over seven million in vehicle license fees in the month of January. Oops. Okay, and so what we'd, um, like to focus on now are, uh, recommendations for, uh, fund balance classification and, uh, transfers, um, and I'm going to give you a brief description on each of, of these items. So the, the Government Finance Officers Association recommends that governments establish and adopt formal financial policies. Um, in tonight's resolution that was approved earlier, uh, it included a funded balance policy. The city has always operated with an unassigned fund balance. The unassigned fund balance is an important measure of economic stability. It is essential that the city maintain adequate levels of unassigned fund balance to mitigate financial risk that can occur from unforeseen revenue fluctuations and unan- unanticipated expenditures. The fund balance also provides cash flow liquidity for the city's general operations. To maintain the City of Hawthorne's solid bond ratings, the city must continue to demonstrate fiscal prudence and controls on spending. Maintaining adequate emergency reserves is yet another way of demonstrating financial discipline. According to the Government Finance Officers Association, reserves are the cornerstone of financial flexibity, flexibility. Reserves provide a government with options for responding to unexpected issues and a buffer against shocks, uh, and other forms of risk. There are many types of risks, risks that the reserves help mitigate, including revenue volatility, as we've seen today, uh, extraordinary unanticipated expenditures, infrastructure breaches, extreme weather events, and civil disturbances. The growth of the city's reserves over the last five years, coupled with the tight spending controls, signal the city's commitment to long-term resilience and overall preparedness in the face of these inherent risks. So with this in mind, the city manager and finance director propose the following committed and assigned fund balance classifications. Uh, asset acquisition fund, um, the city manager would like to plan ahead for future property and asset perf- uh, purchases rather than using a, an unassigned fund balance as we have in the past couple of years. Um, so we'd like to, uh, allocate one million dollars in this initial request. Um, this would be, these items would be reviewed on an annual basis, ac- according to the priorities that council may have. Um, economic uncertainty reserve fund, uh, we would like to allocate three million dollars, uh, and this would be used for potential catastrophic events or extreme weather events such as earthquakes, fires, flooding, and civil disturbances. The pension stabilization fund, we'd like to allocate three million dollars. Uh, this would be used for any future unfunded liability. The city has been hit with unsustainable increases in unfunded liability from PERS twice in the last seven years. Uh, the first time, um, we were able to take care of that in, issue, with issuing a bond in two thousand nineteen. Um, this current, uh, unfunded liability, uh, will require annual payments to PERS. That'll increase, um, our liability and increase our budget, um, overall by about four million dollars. Economic Development and Business Stabilization Fund, we'd like to allocate one million dollars. Uh, this would be used for economic development and to help stabilize businesses during challenging times such as economic downturns, crises, and unforeseen events. The concept of the Economic Development and Business Stabilization Fund typically involves setting aside financial resources to address specific economic challenges and support businesses in times of needs. Um, so for example, um, the city with this fund could provide loans to businesses. They could provide grants, uh, financial literacy, and maybe explanation, additional explanation of processes that maybe they don't understand. Uh, the Capital Improvement Project Fund, uh, we'd like to allocate one million dollars. This program will include major ongoing maintenance and rehabilitation costs to existing infrastructure and facilities, as well as the cost of new facilities or capital improvements. As an example, recently, the city, um, and Public Works received a call from the fire station, uh, one sixty-two here at Gravilla with a request for repairs that require immediate address due to safety concerns. Those repairs will cost ninety thousand dollars that were not previously included in the city's budget. Uh, the ITS Hardware Replacement Fund, uh, will bring this, the hardware replacement funding source in line with the Public Works vehicle maintenance fees, allowing the ITS department, or the IT department, to move the city to a sustainable and predictable hardware replacement schedule uh, for all city departments' desktop, laptop, tablets, and printer equipment. This is a change away from the current model of pulling the existing ITS machinery and equipment fund. Um, the useful life, just as an example, uh, on this type of equi- equipment is laptops about three years, desktops, four years, up to five, uh, printers, three to five years, depending on the usage by each department, and then tablets, about two years. Uh, the OPEB Post-Employment Benefit Trust, we'd like to allocate one million. Uh, in two thousand twenty-two, the city council approved an OPEB trust and an initial contribution of three point five million. This would be the second contribution, which will allow for future payments of OPEB obligations should the city, uh, not be able to make those payments through the normal budget process. Uh, and finally, we have the Equipment Replacement Fund, uh, which we'd like to issue two million, um, dollars to. The Equipment Fund has been in place for many years. It provides for replacement and purchase of vehicles and other machinery. Recently, the Hawthorne Police Department was made aware of unexpected costs. All police radios will need to be replaced. These radios are also used by maintenance staff to communicate with officers in the field. The police department's current portable and vehicle radios, uh, radios are nearing end of life. In, in, in three years, the vendor will no longer support the radios and will not be able to provide virtual or vital updates to the radio software to continue their ability to communicate on the network. This issue affects all our local law enforcement and fire department partners in the South Bay and will require them to update their radios as well. And finally, the city will maintain the current unassigned general fund, uh, reserve at twenty-five percent, um, which was established by ordinance in two thousand nineteen. Uh, and if you have any questions, we can take them now.
Through the chair. Yes, uh, council member Patterson.
Uh, so by estimation, this is a little over fifteen million dollars?
Yes.
From the unassigned, uh, balance for about eighty-three million. I'm gonna round it up and say eighty-five million. So that would leave still the unassigned, uh, reserves of about seventy million left over.
Right.
Got it, thank you. Yes.
So, earlier you said it was eighty-five million, but you said at the beginning of January it's gonna go to ninety-five.
We just completed the January reconciliation, and it's now up to ninety-five million.
Okay, so one of the amounts that you, uh, mentioned was assets, um, acquisition, and you allocated one million dollars to the asset. Now, for me, I know that when we talk about assets, a million dollars is not going to get us anything. So I would want to increase that, um, asset at least into, uh, for three million dollars because, um, one million dollars is gonna get you a single-family home, and-
Well, and, and so, uh, the, um, the reason that we, we were, um, using that fifteen million amount, uh, was that was the increase in fund balance from the prior year to this, uh, year, so we didn't want to touch prior year's balance, but, uh, if council has other recommendations, we can definitely make changes to what is currently being recommended.
Yeah, oh, boy.
Or if council would like to reallocate the proposed fundings that Ms. Lopez presented, we can actually do that, too.
Thank you for that, yeah.
Yeah.
I was just looking at that.
Yeah, because, um, for me, I know that one of our goals is to acquire assets, and in order to acquire assets, we're definitely gonna have to start a little bit higher. So, um, I am asking my colleagues, um, to allocate minimum three million to the asset, um, acquisition fund. Um, that's one thing. The other thing that I wanted to ask you about, um, is the sales taxes. The impact of us having, we have forty vacancies on Hawthorne Boulevard right now, and with those vacancies, um, we're missing out on, uh, tax revenues.
Missing out on business license revenue, tax revenues.
Right, so I also like the idea of when you talked about the lungs, being able to give them lungs, uh, grants, um, and, and support those businesses during hard times. That way, we can help not lose businesses, but also, um, increase those areas because if a business been here for a long time and they fall on hard times, um, and we can help them through those hard times to get back on their feet, then, long-term, we'll be able to replace those funds that we've helped them, and then they can, in turn, uh, give us those, the sales tax. Um, also, when you talk about the sales tax, are there any other areas that we could possibly, um, touch in terms of being able to increase those areas as well? And then, also, when we talk about the hotel TOT, what did you say was the reason? Um, do you think it was part of the pandemic that people were not coming to stay on the, at the hotels as to reason it went down, or did it have anything to do that we were giving, um, vouchers to the homeless?
So, so for the current, um, fiscal year, it, you know, of, of course, with interest rates up and, um, a lot of prices going up, a lot of people maybe were staying home or maybe not going on as many business trips as they normally would, um, and I think that, that had a, a big effect on why we saw less traffic into our hu- hotels.
And then, do you also think it could have been contribute to the, this is something we talked about previously, but the, um, Airbnb, we were saying we were missing out on revenue from that?
We are, we are in the process of establishing that program, the short-term rentals, um, so hopefully, we'll be able to collect on those, you know, in this new, in the new coming year.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, let's see. And then, when you, um, talk about refused franchise fees clearing account, can you, um, explain a little bit more about that?
So that one's like trash collection, that kind of thing.
And that's not gonna change that much, because I'm looking at the, the previous year and this year, and there's just not much change.
Right. It usually doesn't change that much.
Okay. All right, thank you so much.
Through the chair.
Uh, yeah, go ahead. Yes.
Thank you, Felice, for, um, you reporting out. Um, I have a couple of questions with regards to, uh, you, you mentioned earlier land purchase. That, was that Bank of America?
Uh, it was the Bank of America building, and then also, um, the, um-
One, one-sixteenth?
The, yes, the one-sixteenth property.
So, so having a, an asset, um, acquisition fund as such could, um, ultimately just provide us the ready, right? Um, and have that accessible?
Correct.
At, at our convenience.
And I think in one of our prior budget sessions, you had mentioned that maybe we had, we should have a line item for that, so this is kind of in, related to your request.
Great. The other question, Felice, do you know if Sacramento owes us any money at all?
Uh, that, very little in terms of state mandated, but because it's state mandated fees, they keep pushing them back, but they, we recently received, um, a big, uh, payment.
Do you know how much that was?
Gosh.
It's okay. I just want to make sure that we're holding them accountable.
Probably, but, you know, it, it was for many years.
Exactly, and that's my point. Uh, we need to keep pushing, because I know in years past, we had, um, monies that have just been, um, sitting idle, for whatever reason. I know recently, the City of Los Angeles, um, made a request, and they got their money, right? I'd actually took, uh, the mayor and the team to go out there and, and do that. And they also did that in Washington, D.C. So, if we have money that we know of still owed to us, please push on that. And if you need help from us with the letter or the city manager, please let us know that so that we could join in those efforts, too. Okay?
And we do, we do have a consultant who sends a reminder to them every year and prepares the, the request for payment every year.
I want to go all the way down to the bottom where it says Equipment Replacement Fund. We're talking about vehicles, right? We're talking about, are we talking about, I don't know, things that Public Works would need? I mean, what kind of, yeah, tell me, give me.
So, currently, in the budget, we have a charge to each department for the vehicles that they use for the maintenance on those vehicles. But we've never had anything set aside for purchases of police radios. And now that we've been notified that within the next two to three years, all police radios will have to be replaced. We want to set aside that funding now so that we're not scrambling to try to get those radios when it's an emergency.
Okay, I want to make a request. I want to also include our emergency management systems, which is constantly upgrading, very, very connected with CERT. And I know CERT is requesting some radios. So, would this be something that I could request from this fund? Or is it could be something that I can maybe request later on out of Harpa funds or some other availability monies? What's your recommendation?
My recommendation is to allow me to study this item and bring it back as a agenda item to look into some of our current line items. And this here, just to, with the $15 million that Felice is recommending, that we just stay focused on the future and then allow me to study on potential funding left over from Harpa money or a general fund for emergency preparation, things like that.
Yeah, because I think at the, at the end of the day, our police, our fire, our CERT, our emergency preparedness, our emergency management, all of that should be an effort that's combined together, so monies can be allocated to those entities as they need it. And that's something I want to add with regards to who is receiving replacement funds, equipment, moving forward. And those are the entities that I want added to the list. Okay? But I also wanted to ask about I T services. I know we brought back, here recently, we, we had I T do a presentation, and, and I thank them for doing that with regards to artificial intelligence, A I, right? And I know that this is something fairly new. I know this is probably something that would require additional hiring so that we could be better informed, better, you know, equipped with that type of technology. And so, I just want to make sure that I T has what it needs and includes those types of, of, of new expenditures.
And, and that's what we're, we're working on with this budget cycle, yes.
Let's see. Everything else looks great. I think we need to applaud you and everyone's effort, including the council, with regards to $95 million that we currently have. I think that's a great effort on everybody's behalf and, and department heads. Everybody, just thank you and congratulations on that. And I do, too, support your team and anyone that wants to get additional training and programs that would help do their job, whether it's, you know, a new tool or something that is a learning experience, absolutely, so that we could, you know, take this a little further.
And we do appreciate that. Thank you so much.
But thank you so much for reporting out.
Okay. Okay, so I guess it's not my turn. I think this is really great. I really appreciate you. Obviously, the $95 million has been like a team effort up here. So, I guess staff and the, the city council, you know, not abusing of the, the little we were making, bringing in and allowing it to grow and put us in a safe situation. And the city hall and the police staff were, you know, just kind of holding the line, tightening the belts and getting us to a place where other cities are envious, including Inglewood. I know everybody, somebody just referred to them last couple of weeks ago. Torrance is having a hard time. The Beach Cities, we're in awesome shape. So, I think that's something to be proud of, and I want to applaud our city staff for this. So, let's give them a big round of applause. I think that's about 155% increase since 2015. So, we, we're all responsible for this, everybody here in this, under this roof and outside in the city, under the city umbrella. Sir.
Oh, to the chair.
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry.
I was gonna, well, no, I, I wanted to, I think it's good to support this. No, I'll let you do it right now. But I think what the city ma, what we need is just to move forward. And the city manager, if you could see the feasibility of what was recommended up here, give us some honest advice, too. You know, we can, you know, always make decisions. But also kind of have some staff-based recommendations, if you think that there are certain things that we could adjust. Sir.
Thank you. There was something else that I want to bring up. So, part of the appropriation changes, I, I believe this is a part of the appropriation changes. You talked about, in this report, updating our, our budget to increase our expenditures by about $1.7 million, but increase our estimated revenue by, by about $2.5 million?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Right? Which is great. But anyway, I wanted the city manager to talk on, to speak on one thing that, that I saw, which I found, found interesting. I saw reductions, budget reductions throughout this report, which you don't expect to see, that a department will choose to spend less money than was allocated. You know, I wouldn't be surprised if somebody said, hey, I got this much to spend. I'm spending it all. And the fact that, you know, our, our departments are giving money back, essentially, right? To make sure that we stay healthy, I think spectacular. I'm so impressed by it. And a couple of things I, I did notice. I noticed the city attorney's department gave back $134,000 in contract services. And I have to acknowledge that. That's awesome. You know, we, we, I know we contract a lot out, and I know we've, that's been a topic that I, I've had conversations about in the past, about, you know, over the years, about how much you might have contracted out here and there. And I know we are doing a lot of litigation in recent times with the, to, to kind of increase our litigation, but also give back some money from the budget. I think that's awesome. So, thank you for that, for your hard work on that. And the city manager, I see that, as well, giving back $100,000 from your budget in contract services. And that, that's, says a lot, right? From the stewardship, you know, you guys' stewardship and how you guys are, are making good decisions with the city's finances. Because you guys could have easily said, let's find something to spend on. And we would have not have known. Right? And so, you know, that, I'll have to recognize you guys for that. And, and other departments as well, it's not the only department, finance department. Kickback tens of thousands of dollars, $54,000 in contract services. Business licensing, $70,000. I think we saved unemployment, full-time employee costs. The, the police department, I know we're, we're looking to be fully staffed, but we haven't done so, so, so many years, so we'll budget for 95 officers. It may not always reach that, so that becomes a savings at the end of the year. And so, I, this, you know, I, once again, want to say like these type of reports and stuff that I've been kind of begging for since I was the treasurer, you see, I get giddy just looking at the numbers. But give us a good, good, clear insight into what's happening with our city. So, it, it's transparent, so that staff knows where the, what's happening with the money. Public knows what's happening with the money, and, and our elected officials know what's happening with the money. So, I want to say good job. Thank you.
All right. So, thank you. And I just want to add to that, Councilmember Patterson, in particular, this is a great report. And you responded to our request for more graphs, more visuals, and for more tables as needed. So, you kind of definitely met our request, so it could be easy to read and we could have different ways to look at the information. So, thank you. Let's give them a round of applause once more.
Yeah.
It's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, man. All right, let's, this was meant to be a quick meeting, but I think we're almost.
Did we vote on that? Did we already?
I move.
Great.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
All right. Okay, so we have a item 16, which I don't think should be too long, right? And then, we do have a closed session after that. So, we'll have the.
My item?
Your item, and then a quick, just, let's kind of go through it pretty quick. We have one less council member, so I think we'll go be down by 15 minutes.
Well, yeah, this one's an important one, and I'm glad that I still have the community here so that they could, you know, engage and participate. If you remember, a couple of weeks ago, I mentioned that California Edison is gonna increase your, your bill, your utility bill. And I asked, I made a directive for them to show themselves here and to present to us and to give us information. And we literally had to pull it out of them, that there is gonna be two costs to the rate payer, which includes the maintenance and then the, the delivery of electricity, or, you know, as we see it, right? So, there's two costs. It's gonna increase as high as $51 per rate payer, okay? And on top of that, they want to know your, your salary. They want to know what you make per year, so that they could then have an idea of how much more to get out of you. Okay? So, I was sent a heads-up. And there is going to be a hearing held on in person, April 10th. April 10th is a Wednesday. It's gonna be held, and it says here, in person, at the C P U C, which is the California Public Utilities Commission Hearing. It's gonna be on April 10th, from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m., for the sole purpose of hearing from, from the community on an application of Southern California Edison to raise its electricity rates from 2025 through 2028. So, I had said that it was coming, and so, it's here. So, what I'm proposing, and I'm gonna make a directive to, to the city manager, I would like to charter a bus, a bus, or two. I hope it's two, that you really care enough to come and, and let the commission know that you're not in support of California Edison's application to increase your bill. It'll arrive here at City Hall. You could all ride in it. And we could go all together to this meeting, this hearing, to let them know that we do not want it here in Hawthorne. We don't need an increase. We're already up to our head with increases of rent, increases of bread, eggs, groceries, food, other utilities, gas, even buying a car. I mean, I could go on and on and on. This is an application from California Edison to the C P U C for an increase from 2025 through 2028. We need everyone's support. We need everyone's help to take this seriously. I'm taking it seriously. I'm begging the residents of this city to come with me to the commission hearing and just tell them, no. No, enough is enough. We already have high-cost house insurance, high-cost car insurance, and I could go on again. But this is something that I'm taking seriously, and I hope you will, too. The hours of the hearing is from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. It's gonna be at the Recreation Park Community Center in the city of Long Beach, 4900 East 7th Street. And it's in person. I would love to have the community join me and ride with me on a bus so that we could make sure to let the commission know that we don't want our bill increased to 51, to 58, to 60, whatever it is that they're proposing. Southern California Edison is a investor company. They pay themselves first, okay? There's nothing that you're getting out of it, other than your electricity. But we also have Southern California Clean Power Alliance that we're in aggregate with. We've been with them now for the last four, five years. We do procure energy at a lower cost than Edison, not too much lower, but at least it's a nonprofit organization. It doesn't have investors. It pays back its community that are rate payers of it through reimbursements of, you know, rebates, discounts, and things like this. So, again, it's a very important cause, and I wanted to bring this to your attention. And I already thank the mayor, and I want to make sure that we post the mayor and the city manager, because this is very important. But I want to post this also on, on our website, to our I T people, to let them know. I'll give them the date, the time. I'll forward it on to them. I'll let them know, you know, what time to arrive here, so that we could all ride together. I think when we come in a, in force, if you will, coming off a bus to a hearing, that says a lot. That says a lot. So, I hope you keep that date and that time in mind, and that you put that in calendar, and that you, that you provide some, some notes, very easy. It's, they want to increase your rate, very easy, you know? But thank you. And I hope that, I hope that our state senator, Steve Bradford, and Tina McKenner, our assembly member, is watching, because they have not said anything about this. Okay? Steve Bradford is the chair of the Utilities Commission in Sacramento. Okay? So, he has not even said, you know, that this is wrong. Because I'll, I'll tell you one thing, I know exactly what's gonna happen. And, you know, I, I know I'm gonna get backlash, but that's okay. He worked for the California Edison, right? And then became an, an assembly member, and then became a senator. And then, he's leaving office, and I don't know where he's gonna end up. But for him to not say something about this to his residents is really telling. And it's very disappointing, because I reached out to the office, and I asked who I could speak to someone in their office. And they said I'd have to call Sacramento. Didn't tell me who, didn't tell me who I could speak to, with who I could speak to, who I could bring my concerns with. They just said, call Sacramento. So, go figure, right? And I'm a city council member, and that, that was the response I got. So, yeah.
What was that date again?
The, it's April 10th. April 10th is a Wednesday. And it's from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Recreation Park Community Center, 4900 East 7th Street. And it's in person.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we support you. And if there's some, like, maybe some lunch or something, some box lunch that.
We could do that.
People that are riding, just get some snacks, snacks and lunch or something?
Yeah, so I'm thinking if the bus is gonna, is, if the hearing, the hearing starts at 2:00. So, we want to be there before 2:00.
It's on 7th Street, so that's not on one of the standard buildings. It's in probably one of the high-rises.
Yeah, we could get dropped off at, at the, at the door and take it up. So, I'm thinking if it starts at 2:00, I want to maybe say 12:00.
Okay.
Yeah. And I'll reach out through our website for more information. And you, you guys could also call me, but I'm gonna coordinate this with our city manager.
Well, Mr. City Attorney, can, are we, can we post this on our social media? Since it's a directive from the council?
You could. I have questions about providing lunch for everyone, but, because we have certain guidelines.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Bye.
I will find a sponsor for lunch. How about that?
Mr. City Attorney.
I'll find a sponsor for lunch.
Look what you're doing right here.
I'm just telling you, okay?
Well, you know, it, it doesn't matter. The rules are the rules. We'll figure it out.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mayor Proton, and thank you, Mr. City Attorney. I like the bug, you, man. Okay. City Treasurer, your report? Yeah, I think we're at that point now.
Before we go.
We already reached it, yeah. We're almost done, but let's see.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out. It's good to see your faces. I wanted to thank Felice, even though she's probably gone for the day, and the rest of the finance department on a great job with the financial report. I commend her on recommending the new fund balance classifications. I really like that. And I applaud the transparency within the financial report. So, that was good to see. You know, the jobless rate has hit a two-year high, and unemployment moved up 3.9%. three-point-nine percent, which is sort of going to give the Fed a little more room to cut certain rates. With that being said, I had spoke with Peter Yanez over at Multibank Securities, and we were looking at, or well, we discussed, you know, that the yield curve is, you know, massively inverted, and six-month Treasury bills are being offered at a one-percent higher rate than L A F right now, so it's going to be interesting to see how that continues throughout the, out the year also. We have two CDs turning over this month, so it's great to see them catch four-percent rates as opposed to the one-percent they were at. Having L A F, so I noticed a couple of things came up. So L A F, you know, as we all know, is a state ran money pool, basically, you know, they handle the city's funds and does a certain amount of investing for us at a state ran. And they are currently at a four-percent interest rate, however, I would like to see the city, you know, use a little bit more diversity, so it's also good that, you know, Resolution eight, Resolution eight-five-four-three had came up. So moving forward, I wanted to work with the finance director and the city manager to explore more diversity in the city's investing. I'll probably get with the both of you to set up an appointment where we can discuss some things. You know, the city reserve funds, you know, with L A F is quite a substantial amount, and, you know, L A F is one custodian, so I would like to, you know, discuss some options for diversifying some of those funds that we have sitting. So I look forward to doing that with the city manager and the finance director at some point. And that's it, thank you, everyone, for coming out, I hope everyone voted, and voting is important, no matter what election, so it'd be nice to see a higher turnout among Hawthorne residents, but, you know, it was glad that everyone who did vote it, vote. So thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you, and we're looking forward to seeing the results of your collaboration on those specific issues, thanks. Ms. City Clerk?
I want to thank everyone for coming out, remind everyone that notary services are available in the clerk's office with appointment, and also want to coordinate with the city manager and with Mayor Protem Reyes English for the bus trip. If you have any questions, I'm going to obtain that information also, so that if you call the clerk's office, we'll be equipped with the same information. And thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. City Clerk. Councilwoman Manning?
Seemed like you almost forgot who I was.
Why do you say it like that? Why do you say it like that?
You're like, councilwoman.
No, because last time you got at me because I said the wrong, what was it called, pronoun? By accident, go ahead.
All right, good evening, thank you all for coming, I want to wish everybody happy Women's History Month. Also, speaking of Women's History Month, May, no, what is this, March? March thirtieth, from twelve to two-thirty P M., we're going to be celebrating Women's History Month. Mayor Protem and myself, we're going to be hosting a light lunch for Women's History Month, so please make sure to attend that, again, it's May, March thirtieth, sorry.
May, March?
Uh, the, the M.'s, the M.'s.
March thirtieth.
From March thirtieth, from twelve to two-thirty P M. Leading to, we are hosting Hawthorne Business Expo and Job Fair, March fourteenth, from three to seven P M. So excited, can't wait to see you all, please make sure you come out. We have two more days before that event take place, again, we're hosting a job fair and also Business Expo, we're going to have an amazing panel discussion, so make sure you come out for that as well. Let's see, I really truly enjoy Felice's presentation, it was great, I'm so excited that we're planning ahead, and that's what you do, as a city that want to move forward, you plan ahead, and being able to acquire new assets, being able to include more money for revenue is what we need. And then, I'm still truly excited, and I just get excited every time we have a council meeting, when I think about our new civic center and our new senior center, that's going to be phenomenal. I had an opportunity today to talk with our architect and, and just see some of the designs, and it's going to be fabulous, so I look forward to that, and have a good night, and I will see you next council meeting.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilmember David Patterson, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have a few notes on my phone, so bear with me as I read from my phone, and on my notepad.
Oh. Go ahead.
No, continue, Councilmember Patterson.
I completely, I'm sorry, can I go back, I'm sorry, I, I apologize.
Let's, let's make sure we're complete, but go ahead, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I forgot to give a directive to the city manager for the holiday for December. I did it last year, and I wanted to do it this year, to give the employees that week off, let me see, I think it said in the last week of December, uh, city manager? December twenty-third through the twenty-seventh. I'm sorry, I apologize for, it hit my head.
Why so early, though? I mean, why do you want to lay it out so early?
I want to get it out the way, and make sure that it happens.
Shoot, let's take it to New Year's Eve, everybody off.
All right, Council, Councilmember Patterson, let's move on.
I want to thank the community for coming out and participating in the process, making your voices heard, you know, it's what makes, you know, our process successful, by having your, your presence and your input. I want to congratulate everybody who voted last week. I was out, I was out of the country at the time, actually, I was in Panama, and had the opportunity to, to meet with some government, government officials and some entrepreneurs, and was able to really exchange some ideas, it really made me think about an idea that our city manager had of maybe having a sister city somewhere, that we can do an exchange of ideas and benefit each other. But I, you know, I was, you know, you know, somewhere different, I was following the updates of the election, you know, every day, looked at it just last, last today, to see what the updates of the, of the voting was, I could, you know, I'm very excited about voting and elections, I love the fact that we have our ability to, to direct our, our future through our vote, and so I want to congratulate everybody that came out and voted. There's some close judge races, hope you guys all voted for Judge.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm really serious about that, because, you know, our judges, you know, we elect many of our judges, and are just play a huge role in how justice is done in, in our, in our neighborhood and our city. And so we focus on our D A., we focus, focus on a lot of other people, which we should, and we should also focus on our judges as well, so congrats to everybody who voted. City Treasurer talked about six-month T. bills being higher than L A F, may not mean a lot to a lot of people, right, but, you know, L A F is our, I think it's local area investment fund, local, local agency investment fund, but like you said, it, it's a, like a money market fund that the state runs, and the fact that we get, you know, six-month Treasury bills paying higher than, than L A F, I think it's definitely worth pursuing, you know, if it is a one-percent advantage, you know, twenty million dollar, additional twenty million dollars that direction would mean an extra two-hundred thousand dollars to the city, you know, if we did it continuously through the course of the year. So I, I, I think that's awesome to, to take a look at. I want to say hooray to the city and our city staff for the, the fifteen million surplus that we had in the previous fiscal year, right, that was addressed in today's council meeting. It just says a lot about our city, that we're, we're putting away, putting away money. Felice, I like the voice, can't hear what anybody says, I used to always love getting sick when it changed my voice, right, I didn't have like a deeper voice, and, and I would, like, enjoy it, and then it would go away, and I'd get sad, right, so.
Barry White, right?
Yeah, 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 I wanted to be a radio host for a second, after that happened. There was a previous council meeting, I asked to get some information about how the city can set no-fault relocation allowances for landlords looking to move out tenants, and I just kind of will follow up on that and see what information, kind of understand what we can or can't do in that respect, and then potentially bring something for the council to discuss. Last council meeting, despite, you know, variance of different opinions, we talked about a, some strategies in which we can create economic, economic development in our city, redevelopment fund, we can take, take this mall back and, and redevelop the mall for, for positive purposes, and I want to extend my support of those type of efforts. I remember years ago, Councilmember Montero talked about putting eminent domain on the ballot, and that time didn't make sense, because we had to use it for public purposes if we, we used some, took something like eminent domain, but if we, as, if we're a charter, we could, we could be different. And so, whatever the mechanism it is, I don't care, right, what I do care about is economic development for our city, right? I, I chose to pursue this, this seat to answer our city in my, in my area's strength, there's a lot of things I don't know nothing about, and a lot of things I'm not good at, right, but one thing I love talking about, I love pursuing is economic development, is financial literacy, is, is financial solvency for our city, and making sure that we are prospering financially, and I'm always kind of fight for whatever tools at our disposal to make sure that we have a prosperous Hawthorne Boulevard, and, and the businesses flourish. And so I just want to let you guys know, regardless of the criticism that, that I might receive for my positions, I'm going to hold my positions, so I think that they can benefit our city. There was a previous council meeting, I, I talked about the feasibility of doing like a mixed-use development on our main thoroughfares, and I just kind of want to bring that conversation back up, the way kind of Culver City is doing down their main thoroughfares, they're keeping their residential areas very residential, but their main thoroughfares, they're, they're bringing up a lot of mixed-use development, right, and I think that, I, I like that, I wanted to see if that's possible, right, for our city. And I want to praise our Public Funds Advisory Committee, we met on Monday, I believe, right, to go over the city's finances, you know, it's a committee that was put together years ago, when there was just some funny business happening with our finances, right, under a previous mayor, and previous finance director, and previous city manager, and the idea was, was put forth to put together this oversight committee that comprises of staff members and one council, and one council member, to make sure that we're very transparent over our finances, and make sure that staff knows exactly, you know, what's happening with our money and our finances, and we had a great, and I, I happen to be the chair currently, and we had a great meeting on Monday, and I really want to commend Felice for her, her commitment to that, that meeting and, and that body. You know, I've seen her really step up to the things that I've asked for in terms of financial reporting, and, and, you know, with enthusiasm, and really deliver and over-deliver, and I appreciate that. And I wanted to shout out our officer Anthony Barland, who had a lot of great questions during that meeting. We have that meeting, I think, I don't know, quarterly, maybe, and definitely want to encourage the community to come out and listen to that, we really kind of talk about our, our finances, but, yeah, Officer Barland was, was really vocal and had a lot of great questions, and really appreciated that input, and I'm really hoping that, that, that body can do more in supporting the city in, you know, in its financial efforts and transparency and reporting and things like that, you know, whatever that, that body can, can do. And lastly, make sure it's going to be lastly, I would like to.
No, 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 keep going.
I would like to request a, a commission update report for our commissioners, doesn't need to be public, send me an email, but just kind of want to stay up to date as to, you know, obviously what commissions we have, are they full, are they not full? How many applicants do we have for various commissions? Are we having any issues with attendance at any of our commissions, right? Any of that stuff, we want to make sure, obviously, our city, our city runs, runs well. And it's all I can remember, I think I've done enough talking, that was great seeing everybody, and, you know, until next time.
Thank you, Councilmember Patterson. We're good, though? Okay, so Mayor Protem, Anthony Reyes English.
Okay, um, a couple of things. I first want to acknowledge Councilmember Alex Montero, he's not with us today, however, I just want to congratulate him on his efforts and, and his, his recent run for office to state, state senate, so I just want to acknowledge that and let him know that that was really great of him, and I really admire his, his, wow, his, just his canter and everything else that went with it, with regards to how he ran his race, so congratulations to him. And then also, I want to announce our Earth Day Celebration, plus our Service Provider Fair, Saturday, April twentieth, ten to two P M. This is the, I want to say eighteenth annual, I want to say eighteenth annual Service Provider Fair, but Earth Day Celebration along with it, so please make sure you mark your calendars. There will be raffle prizes, lunches, goodies, paper shredding, e-waste collection, compost giveaway, and services, and I just want to thank everyone that's been participating in the committee to make this happen, that includes our community services, our Public Works Department, and this is a rain or shine event, let's hope no rain, but truly want to acknowledge to our city manager and our department heads that have been sitting around the table with us as we planned this event, so thank you so much for that. I want to mention that there are yoga classes, all levels, yoga classes, March fourth through April twenty-second, Mondays, six to seven, and gentle yoga, that sounds more like me, I need a gentle yoga.
Sorry, sorry.
March sixth through April twenty-fourth, and that's on Wednesday, six to seven, and that's at the Betty Ainsworth Sports Center, so there's yoga classes, if anyone's interested in that. There's a community cleanup this Saturday, March sixteenth, from eight to one P M. at the Betty, Betty Ainsworth's parking lot, and people like Catherine and students and everybody that wants to get credit and be able to contribute to the community, please make sure to come, especially students from all of our area high schools, please come, we need your help to clean our streets. Also, the city of Hawthorne Community Services has the Bunny Bonanza Celebration, Saturday, March twenty-third, ten to two, there's inflatables, a puppet show, and egg hunt, that should be fun. I want to acknowledge, we had a ribbon-cutting ceremony today for some of our properties that we own, it was rehabilitation ribbon-cutting, I wasn't able to tan, but thank you to those that participated and, and were there to make that, that, that cutting, I think, were you, yeah, there you go. Thank you, we appreciate you, thank you for that. And Felice, for today's presentation, that was great, it's exciting, always exciting to know that we're doing good, and that we continue to do good, and that's because we're, we're frugal when it comes to not using our general fund for things that we often take a look at, and we, at the end of the day, find other resources, so that's great. I've been working hand-in-hand with CERT, I left the bag up here so that folks can see what this is, it's our CERT bag that you get, it's for emergency preparedness, disaster preparedness, and we're going to be hosting a couple of CERT training programs here in Hawthorne, it's along with L.A. County Fire, and I want to thank Sam English upstairs in the city attorney's office for his efforts and his planning and coordination, along with Mr. Matthews, Jim Matthews, and Kenny Lamar, can you please stand up, both of you? I want to acknowledge them, can we give them a hand of applause, please? They've been volunteering with our CERT program here in Hawthorne for years, and the dedication that these two men display is just, you know, beyond me, but I truly appreciate you two, gentlemen, and thank you for what you do in helping our city of Hawthorne, but more importantly, taking this, you know, seriously and to heart. And with that, I want to, thank you so much, Jim and Kenny, I want to be able, for them to attend the National CERT Conference in Washington, D.C. I'd like them to be able to continue their training efforts with other communities that include. Um, I'd like them to be able to, uh, continue their training efforts with other, uh, communities that include nationwide. Uh, that's going to be in July 22nd through Saturday, the 27th. Um, I'm still kind of up in the air on that myself, but, uh, please include them so, so that they could be able to attend that conference. And, um, you know, maybe Mr. Samuel. Uh, I also want to include a, a budget request for a replacement of a handheld replacement radio that they're going to need. Uh, that's probably about 6,000 that, that they're going to need. So I want that radio replaced for them. I also want to know from, uh, HR, uh, what's the status of our Emergency Preparedness Coordinator, uh, position that we had opened up. I hope that we're still, uh, looking to recruit and ultimately get someone to help us run our emergency, uh, management systems, but more importantly, do the community outreach and collaborate with, uh, businesses and those alike to be able to firsthand train in case there's ever an emergency and they are, uh, needed. Um, we didn't anticipate COVID and look what happened. So it's very important that we keep emergency preparedness always, uh, at the front, forefront of our minds when it comes to, um, preparing and planning for the, uh, unknown. Uh, I also want to thank Juan and City Manager for their help to coordinate the CERT Training Memorial Center with LA County Fire, which are three days of training and they are from nine to five. Uh, the training, uh, will start Saturday, October 26th, uh, Saturday, November 2nd and Saturday, November 9th. And those classes are from nine to five. Uh, we do plan on, on, uh, getting you some lunch for those days too, Von. So we're going to be working on that. And, um, I also want to invite the community to, uh, come to the CERT mixer. The CERT mixer is just a, a segue, a start to our training. Uh, and that mixer is going to be April 2nd, uh, from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Hawthorne Memorial Center. All of you are welcome to come and hear about CERT and hopefully register for the three days of training that will be taking place at the Memorial Center along with LA County Fire. This is all training with LA County Fire and the City of Hawthorne in collaboration. But I want to thank LA County Fire for meeting with me yesterday and, uh, having a fruitful conversation on, uh, emergency preparedness and just the passion that they have in training the community. Um, it, it, it was quite evident. They're everywhere. It's just not here in Hawthorne. They're everywhere. They're LA, LA County wide. So I just want to thank them for that. And, um, yeah, um, a couple of updates that we got from, uh, code enforcement, a couple of updates that we get from our community policing, a couple of updates that we get just in general, all the time, keeping the council in, in, in our, in a loop. And, uh, I appreciate that. I really do. And, um, Von, can't say enough. You're always there. Uh, you're always there to help us along and make suggestions where maybe we've fallen off the railroad. So the track's there, but thank you. I'm going to make one last, uh, request and it might be a surprising one, but it's, it's going to happen. Um, I want to ask that the City Attorney work with, uh, the Charles Company regarding the mall. I would like the mall to be able to permit, to get a permit from the city, to be able to, uh, help the Disney Company. Disney, as you know, uh, hasn't been able to make movies or anybody has in the last few years because of COVID, because of their striking and their, and, and, you know, um, unions being, uh, you know, having to negotiate, not a no, no, not able to negotiate. At any event, they want to film the, um, Disney movie, um,
Mandalorian.
Mandalorian, The Mandalorian. Um, it's a space, is it space?
Star Wars.
Star Wars. I can't, I can't, I, I, they, they were talking to me about it and I just, I couldn't remember the movie. But anyway, they want to film here in Hawthorne. They want to film here in Hawthorne. They want to use the mall. They want to have about five, maybe six months of filming. They're going to be hiring locally about 500 people. They need about 70 people, uh, uh, extras every day to film. Yeah, look, I have people pointing at, yeah. Look, I, I, I get what we've been trying to do with regards, regards to the mall, but, uh, I'm probably the, the, the one that pressed on, you know, um, you know, doing whatever we could to, 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 you know, suppress, suppress that. Um, but I, I, at the end of the day, when you're looking at the job creation, when you're looking at the uh, history of movies and the industry leaving California to film elsewhere in other countries, in other cities, um, you know, it, it really hurts us. And I know in talking with constituents in the community, there are people that live here in Hawthorne that, that work in the film industry that are, uh, employees of that, of that agent, of those agencies and rely on movies and filming to be able to work. And so that just, uh, I, I know that's a given and I don't want to, uh, keep folks from not working. And I'm not saying that the mall is just the only place, but this is what they're asking us. This, they want the filming to happen here of all places. They want the filming to happen here and they know the exact location they want it at. And, uh, when they talk about creations of jobs and everything, as I mentioned, uh, I have to just kind of, you know, humble myself and think about that and, uh, see what that means for those individuals that haven't been able to work otherwise and have been suppressed due to, you know, uh, things out of their control. So, uh, if you could work, uh, on that, I'd appreciate it. And then report out to Von so that he could give us some information. Ultimately, uh, help to get a permit for them to be able to film and make negotiations with the mall owners for just that period of time. And, uh, that would be that. So. Thank you, all of you for coming. Thank you Catherine for coming. Uh, appreciate everyone's help, uh, everybody's support. And I do hope to see everyone on that bus. I really do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any go-bags? No, no, anybody, yeah, okay, it's good. Thank you, guys. Uh, great meeting today. I guess you guys could all, you guys could all agree. Uh, we have one last item, which is a closed session. So that's why we did the reports right at the end. So anybody who's in the audience can just go home and, uh, you know, start, you know, resting or whatever you do. I don't know. Maybe you're, you know, you guys are night owls, vampires or something. Your night starts now. You're crawling through the streets, you know, whatever. But, uh, we do have, is this for public dissemination? Or is that our own internal? So we have a, uh, we do have a resource, a list of, uh, all the services that we have in the city. Things where you guys, you know, just paper-based, you know, I know that somebody mentioned our, an app that includes all this, our website. But this is a paper-based, uh, referral service system where it talks about animal control, animal emergency lines, coyotes, uh, coyotes, the, 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 the sports. And we're not talking those people that cross people on the border, okay? So don't start like tripping out over there, okay? All right? Don't, don't start getting ideas. We don't promote that over here. Senior Center, we got the homeless services. Uh, we got even more things in here, guys. So you guys get the idea. Okay? So we have something. If you would like a copy, nice and bound, I guess, uh, this is not the bound part? Now, we can, we can give you a, a bound copy if you so requested, okay?
Mr. Mayor, can I jump in on that? On the front cover of that, um, there's a QR code, which is online. That will take, uh, citizens to all the resources that we have available for all situations, for funding, trash pickup, anything you need in the city, that QR code will take you there.
Okay, awesome. Um, no, no, thank you, thank you. Uh, so you got the QR code that you can, um, look things up? Or you can come and get the paper-based system? I'm more of a paper-basedist, uh, type of person. Our city clerk kind of knows that. No, no, with the, I'm kind, no, I really am, you know? I, I teach a class at El Camino and I tell the students, hey man, I rather, I can't work off of the, uh, the, the computer. I need to pull out my book when I'm with them. So it's kind of easier for me. But so if anybody does need something like this, we'll make sure that we'll just, just establish where we have some of these available for you. You can come pick them up. Um, let's see. I got a few items. Uh, I want to thank, okay, I just want to let you know that like sometimes I say, hey, you know, we'll, let's see what the city manager says, let's see what the, uh, staff says. And not that our ideas are not, uh, good up here. I just want to make sure that my counterpart, my colleagues up here know. The, the reason I do that is because sometimes we, uh, we're not like at the deepest, 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 like, uh, frontline level that our staff is, uh, we're like our police chief or finance director or planning director. So that's why we, uh, we need to hear from them. Okay, you know, that sounds like a good idea to work. It'll help, help us. Or just a strong, safe, you know, uh, determination that it might not be the best choice. You would like, maybe would like to reconsider. So I think that's helpful for us in, uh, being able to do the best we can for our cities. And we just make, we just need to make sure that our staff is free to do so without, um, you know, uh, fear of any like, you know, dissatisfaction with their performance or anything like that, right? They're doing the best and giving us honest opinions. Do you guys all understand what I'm saying? Thumbs up, middle, down, right? That's what I do in the class. Hey, thumbs up if you agree with them. So no problems. Okay, so. It's kind of corny, but it works, right? It is corny, but it works. So thank you staff for what you guys are doing, okay? Uh, let's see, the, uh, Jim Matthews, um, sir, and the gentleman, uh, who came with him. Uh, I took, I took the class well, like 2009 or something, man, 2010. Um, and, uh, yeah, awesome, awesome service. So I know I talked to you about a year, uh, a year ago or about the, uh, the same thing that was presented today. I don't know if you had given me the invoice or whatever it was, but either way, um, right here, I support that. Uh, replacing your radios and, um, any train, any additional, uh, things that you guys need with regards to that. If you guys could just, uh, present them to us, uh, so that we could, uh, take care of that under, under the, uh, under the aspect of our, you know, mission up here to be able to provide emergency services to the community. And you're not even asking for a lot, man, but I know that it makes a difference if we can help, okay? So thank you. Right? Um, one thing that stood out today, uh, was the, the, the financial, you know, the fina- financial presentation. I think that's great. Look, we're in a great place, but I think we came up with, uh, uh, two elements today that I recognize, which the first one being of the City Treasurer's, uh, desire and collaboration with our, our city staff to be able to look at the allocation of our investments to see if we, there's ways we can, uh, squeeze some more money out of our investments, right? Sometimes, you know, uh, I depend on my 401K. It's in a mutual fund, but sometimes, you know what? They tell you that's the best you can do. Sometimes you have to make a decision as to where you put your money so that it could, uh, work for you. You got to adjust things on your own. So you can't just leave it in there and just, there, there, there could be better choices that could be made. And so, uh, City Treasurer, thank you for stepping up on that. So I just wanted to re, uh, re-mention that. And, uh, something that my co- colleague, uh, Councilmember David Patterson, uh, talked about was the Financial Oversight Committee. That's an essential, uh, part. Even though, um, it's kind of happens maybe within the council chambers here, somewhere else. Um, it's, these are questions that get asked that this feedback that comes out of these meetings certainly goes to our, uh, city manager, certainly goes to all the rest of the department chair, uh, people. And, uh, the, uh, I think Felice is there too, right? So Felice is hearing this and she, you know, so she carries that information and say, hey, this is what happened. You know, this is what came up. Uh, Mr. City Manager, the staff, let's see what we, improvements we can make. So that's an essential. So those two, those two things to me, uh, contribute on making sure that we're as, uh, fine-tuned on our, uh, financial acuity, okay? One thing that the la- uh, the, the young lady that came up and talked about over here uh, was a request for possibly, you know, looking at our, an app that we can, uh, use where it's, it's based on geolocation. And this information could be sent back to Republic Services. Um, I think that's, that is a great idea that I would support, but the thing is that we as a city, we have our own telephone number, right? Do we still have the telephone number, Akbar? Akbar, or, 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 Mr. City Manager, he was over there. Yay! Um, so we still do that. Do we, forgive me for my ignorance, do we have like an app that has, uh, geolocation, uh, capabilities? Is that something that's feasible? Do we? And if we do, um, well, I think sometimes we need to just, uh, promote certain aspects of our app. You know, when the need becomes. So it's like, maybe that's something we could just publicize and, uh, just promote on our social media as of now. So the young lady right here could, uh, get access to that. And, uh, we can highlight certain aspects of our application. And I think right now is a good opportunity to do that. Is that okay, Akbar? Uh, Mr. City Manager, sorry, through staff. No, 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 I'm sorry. Mr. City Manager, is it okay we could direct our staff, uh, departments?
Absolutely. We'll bring back a presentation, maybe at the next council meeting if you're here. And we'll go through those items that the 311, 311 app actually has.
So yeah, 311 app, ma'am. So look, ma'am, just make sure everybody, uh, goes to their, uh, through the application services, right? 311 and you get to select city and it's on there. So thank you, uh, Mr. City Manager. Uh, I haven't had the need to do that, but I think it's important so that people could just, uh, one of the things, guys, that we really have to recognize is that the City of Hawthorne is a rental commu- uh, the great majority of the people living here are renters, okay? Everybody's here working hard, trying to make it. And, uh, sometimes people need to change, you know, their residence, you know, maybe move somewhere else, maybe move across the city. Sometimes move outside of the city, move in, et cetera. So just think about how difficult a move is like that. Some people call that, hey, you know what? Some people are trashing the city by putting a damn sofa outside or putting a refrigerator. Oh, Hawthorne's this, Hawthorne's that. Hey, you know what? That's just the situation in our city. We're a rental community. And if we could facilitate the removal of such, uh, uh, items, it's not that those people don't want to do the right thing. It's just that we just need to facilitate, highlight the, uh, large item pickup service that we have so that that element, um, doesn't show up on our street, right? So we can't look, we can't look at it as a negative. We just got to find a solution and make things easier for, for our community. That's it. So. Equal payday? What's that? Okay, so we have like what's called equal paydays. So today we want, well, female, isn't it?
Yeah, no, it's for females. Come on.
All right. So you know, today's equal payday. It was just, uh, Mayor Protem mentioned it to me. And, uh, we just want to make sure that, uh, a man and woman are be, are able to be able to be compensated for the work that they do equally. So I think it's, uh, I hope we're approximating and I think the move is. And so we just need to make sure that we ensure equal pay. Equal pay, uh, that there's no, uh, age discrimination also in the workplace and, uh, uh, pay discrimination, gender-based, so. Okay. Promise this was going to be a-
Yeah, real quick, yeah.
Is there any member of, of public that would like to address item 17? Seeing no one, if there's no objections or communication is closed, so ordered. So we'll now recess the city council meeting to conduct a closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda at 8:27 p.m. We're in recess. for a conference pursuant to the agenda at eight twenty-seven PM. We're in recess.
The city of Hawthorne has revised the Hawthorne Municipal Code twelve dot zero four dot zero three one pertaining to sidewalk repair and maintenance. The revised code places new duties and obligations on the property owners adjacent to sidewalks in conformance with the California Streets and Highways Code. The revised municipal code section can be found online at the website shown on the screen. A copy of section twelve dot zero four dot zero three one is also available from the city clerk's office. Property owners are encouraged to consult their own legal counsel or insurance companies if they have questions about the legal impact of the new code section.
How to obtain a business certificate in the city of Hawthorne? First, check to make sure you have fulfilled all state and county business requirements such as becoming a legal entity, acquiring an EIN number, registering your business with the Secretary of State, obtaining any specialty licenses or permits, et cetera. To obtain a business tax certificate in the city of Hawthorne, check local zoning regulations. Come to the business license office for the business license or tax certificate packet. There's also a downloadable version online at www.cityofhawthorne.org/departments/finance/licensing/licensing-forms. Submit your completed application to the business license office for processing. Please only answer questions that pertain to the type of business you wish to operate. Not all items listed will apply. You may ask who will review your application for approval. The application will first go to the planning department to confirm the potential location is zoned for your business type. If you come into the office, you will walk your application to the planning office and they will send you back to business licensing if approved to pay for the business tax certificate. If not approved, you are not eligible for a business tax certificate. Options are to move to a properly zoned area or dissolve the business within the city of Hawthorne. Next, the application will be reviewed and approved by our building and safety department. If your business applies, who will contact you to schedule an inspection of the physical property? Follow-up inspections may be necessary. Then, the application will be sent to the Hawthorne Police Department and LA County Fire Department, who will check for issues associated with the address such as excessive calls and more. The city manager and finally the city attorney will review what businesses are coming to the city, ensure all proper steps or approvals have been taken and that there is no pending or past litigation against the proposed business. Upon final approval, a business tax certificate is created and mailed. This document is not given over the counter. Note, if your application is denied by any department involved in the approval process, please follow up with that department directly. What you should know: Business tax certificates expire December thirty-first and renew annually January first to thirty-first. Taxes paid after January thirty-first will incur a twenty-five percent monthly penalty until one hundred percent is reached. Taxes are based on flat fees or gross sales from the previous year. At renewal time, gross receipts are given. Calculations can result in an adjustment of taxes owed or credited. Please call the licensing office when trying to calculate your business tax for accuracy. If you have a credit, it will be applied to the next year's taxes. The city does not accept partial payments. If you do not have a business tax certificate, you may not conduct business in the city of Hawthorne. of Hawthorne. Every day, over one hundred Americans die from secondhand smoke. Secondhand smoke in children can cause asthma, ear infections, and increased risk of sudden infant death syndrome. Go to smokefreehomesla.com. Learn how you can protect your home from secondhand smoke.
Uh, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, let me first read the agenda item. It's item number seventeen, it's a closed session. Conference with legal counsel, real property negotiation pursuant to section five four nine five six point eight and five four nine five four subsection B of the California Government Code. Property APN is four zero five zero dash zero one four dash zero zero two. Property address is approximately point nine one acres of land located at one three zero zero seven Yukon Avenue. City Negotiator, Von Treue Norris. City Manager, negotiation with one three zero zero seven Yukon Avenue Hawthorne LLC, under negotiation price and terms of payment. Uh, city council, four members of the city council met in closed session. After discussion, um, city council voted unanimously, unanimously four to zero to terminate this, uh, project with respect to the per... potential purchase of the property at one three zero zero seven Yukon Avenue. Um, that will conclude the city's negotiation on this particular property.
If there's nothing further from, uh, city council members or staff, this meeting is adjourned at eight fifty-four.
Thanks, ma'am.